I greet you all in the wonderful name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ of Nazareth. My name is Zandile Butelezi, and I'm here to continue with this week's Bible study session. We are still looking at the series titled Church Membership. And the topic that we are looking at today is still bitterness. We are concluding it today. We'll still be looking at the foundational scripture found in the book of Hebrews, chapter 12, verse 15. We'll be looking at it from the NIV, which reads as follows: "See to it that no one falls short of the grace of God, and that no bitter root grows up to cause trouble and defile many." Let us pray. Father, in the mighty name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ of Nazareth, we thank you for your word that you have provided for us this day. We pray therefore that our hearts be ready to receive that which you have to say to us. We pray, mighty God, silencing every other noise that might try to distract us and disturb us from that which you want to say to us. And we pray that we not only hear what you are saying, but that we apply it in our lives. We pray all of this in the mighty name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ of Nazareth. Amen. Just to read the foundational scripture again. It says, "See to it that no one falls short of the grace of God, and that no bitter root grows up to cause trouble and defile many." Now, what we get from this scripture is that if bitterness is a root, then it is foundational in the production system. We have a picture of a tree here with the roots exposed. This tree is basically showing us the power of the roots to a tree. The roots of a tree serve firstly as an anchor, meaning that when storms come, when winds blow, the tree will stay in place because the roots are deeply grounded. And so if the roots are weak, then the tree will not be able to stand. And also, roots serve as the feeding system to the tree. So it's the roots that absorb the nutrients from the ground in order to feed the rest of the tree. So the productivity of the tree rests solely on the work that is done by the roots. So now, if the roots are rotten, this could cause defilement to the rest of the tree. It could even lead to death. Now, we as Christians need to be careful that we do not find ourselves having the root of bitterness growing in us because it will defile us and not just us, but many others around us. Now, just to do a recap of what we looked at last week. Now, we said that bitterness is basically a sharpness of taste. And we used an example of an orange peel. And we said it is hard to eat an orange peel because it tastes awful, and it's unbearable, and it's unpalatable. So when a person is bitter, it means that they are unpleasant to be around. They are unpalatable. They are undesirable to be around. And so, we said also that bitterness is a feeling of pain, hostility, or resentfulness that has become embedded in a person's character. Now, we feel pain. We say that we are hurt by many people. Even in the house of the Lord, people hurt us. Even our leaders hurt us sometimes. But it is very important that we are able to deal with the pain and move on. Because if we do not deal with pain and we leave it in us, it festers and it becomes a wound that becomes bitterness and spreads in us. And it becomes a root that causes us to be bitter unto other people. So it is important that we always check the pain that we go through and we are able to deal with it and move on and not hold on to it because it becomes a toxin in our body if we let it stay in our hearts. Now, we also looked at the causes of bitterness. And we said, we looked at four causes last week. And we said the first one was trials. And we said that trials are basically an experiment that is done over a period of time to test the quality of something or someone. So we looked at the fact that the definition tells us that trials are not a one-day thing or a two-day thing, but it is something that is done over a period of time in order to test the genuineness of something. And so when we go through trials as Christians, the Bible says that trials in our lives come to test the genuineness of our faith. And they also come in order to produce patience in us. So we established last week that trials come to build in us the fruit of the Spirit. And we said that they come and they humble us because they have a purpose. We said they come for our humbling and our molding, which is necessary in our journey as Christians. We need to be molded into the pattern of Christ. And in order for us to be molded into that pattern, we need to be malleable. And we are made malleable by fire, by the trials that humble us and make us to be able to take whatever shape that God desires of us. We said another cause of bitterness is unforgiveness. Now, unforgiveness is basically the unwillingness to forgive other people for the wrong that they have done unto you. Now, note there the word that is used. It is not the inability to forgive, but it is the unwillingness of a person to let go of the pain and people that have harmed them. So you willingly hold on to things that people have done unto you. You willingly hold on to the offense that was done by other people to you. And that ends up causing bitterness in your life because then you cannot live freely because then your life is determined, or your joy or your happiness is determined by whether the people that harmed you are around or not. We also said another cause for bitterness is self-righteousness. And we said self-righteousness is basically the unfounded belief of a person to think that they are morally above other people. So they are morally superior to other people. And so when you are caught up in self-righteousness, then this leads to bitterness because when you are self-righteous, then you end up feeling entitled because to you salvation is no longer a relationship, but it has become about does and don'ts. It's become about rules. And when you feel that you are adhering to the rules more than others, then you feel entitled to all the blessings and all the good things and all the promotions. And when other people get it that you deem are not deserving of those promotions, then you become bitter. In fact, some people end up just giving up on salvation altogether because they think that it is not fair. In fact, favor has never been fair. And so when we walk in self-righteousness, we are basically sitting ducks for bitterness. Now, another cause that we looked at last week was past experiences. Now, we looked at the negative past experiences where you find that people are caught up in the unpleasant experiences that they had while they were growing up. And we said these people now struggle to appreciate the present or the future. They struggle to look at God and to focus on God because they are caught up on what they went through. They are caught up on their experiences and they hold on to the pain. And we said they are no different from a person who actually walks backwards and that person is not seeing where they're going. And if a person is walking backwards, it means then that they are in danger of tripping and falling because they do not see the obstacles that are before them because they are facing their back towards where they are going. Now, to continue this week, we'll look at one more cause of bitterness and move on to another session. So another cause of bitterness is fear. Now, what is fear? Fear is basically the dread caused by the anticipation of failure, danger, or pain. Now, fear is basically something that is grounded on uncertainty. You are uncertain about the outcome. And so then you become fearful. You become afraid because your predictions of the outcome are usually negative. When you don't know something, you try to fill in the gap and you try to predict it for yourself. And when you predict, you come up with the negative. And then you become afraid. Nobody has ever been afraid of succeeding. But when you are fearful, it means that you are already looking at a negative outcome to what you have to do. So fear is the crippling tool of the devil and the enemy of purpose. Now, the devil uses fear a lot in a believer's life in order to cripple them from doing things. He stops you from doing things because then you are afraid that you will fail. You are afraid that you will come across pain when you do something and then you hold back and you end up not fulfilling your purpose. You end up not walking in that which God has predestined for you because you are afraid to step out. You want to stay in the comfort zone. And so then you end up being bitter. Now, bitterness emanates from a life that is not lived, a position not filled, and the joy that is not experienced. So basically, this means that you'll have questions in your life of, "I should have. Why didn't I do that?" you know? And that is a life not lived where you're always saying, "I should have done that. I should have had that. I should have said that." And that is you basically looking at all the things that you should have done but did not do. And when you do not do what you're supposed to do, you find yourself being bitter. You find yourself being jealous of those that are actually doing what they're supposed to be doing. Now, it also emanates from a position not filled. There are people who are supposed to be in positions. There are people who are supposed to be leaders. There are people who are supposed to be active in a certain way, but they're not because they were fearful to step out. And then when somebody else occupies their position, then they become bitter because at the end of the day, work still has to carry on. Things have to be done. If you are unwilling to show up for your position or for your role, somebody else will take it. And then you end up being bitter because now you look at what the other person is doing and you think that you could have done A, B, C, and D, and the person is doing the wrong thing. And so then you become a person who is unable to submit. And then you have people that are now lacking joy because when you live in a life that is without fulfillment, you will never have joy. You will not experience joy. The joy will come once you are where you are supposed to be doing what you are supposed to be doing. Joy will hold you in place even when the hard times come because even if you are in your purpose, hard times will still come. But joy will stick with you if you are where you are supposed to be. Now, most people because of fear are not where they're supposed to be. They did not get to the place that God had predestined for them. And so now they are not fulfilling their purpose. And if they're not fulfilling their purpose, then they become bitter. So it is important for us to move past fear. God many times in his word encourages us to not be fearful. And so if we want to walk in our purpose, if we want to fulfill the purpose of the church of God, we need to be able to step out of fear and fulfill our own purpose. Because remember, the church is made up of individuals. And how the church will meet its purpose is if each and every person within the church is within their purpose of God. So it is important that we all fight against the spirit of fear and move in faith and trust in God. Now, what does bitterness affect in our lives? It affects our relationship with the Lord. How does it do this? Bitterness leads to doubting. Now, when you doubt what God can do, you're basically doubting God himself. You doubt his existence. If you doubt that God can heal you, then it means you're doubting him as God because he is a healer. If you're doubting that he can provide, you are doubting that he exists because he is a provider. So Hebrews 11, verse 6 states that, "But without faith it is impossible to please him; for he who comes to him must believe that he is and that he is a rewarder of them that diligently seek him." So here we see the Bible says that when we come to God, we must believe that he exists. Now, if we doubt what he can do, we are actually doubting his existence. And he is not pleased by us. So it is important that we take care of bitterness because as bitterness grows in us, it produces all these other things within us that defile us. Now, bitterness also leads to complaining. Now, when you are bitter, you are dissatisfied. When you are dissatisfied, you are bound to complain. Something is never done right. "Why are they not doing it like this? Why are they sending me? Why are they telling me to do that? Why are they making so-and-so to do that?" So you're always complaining about everything that takes place because nothing ever satisfies you. Now, Philippians chapter 2, verse 14 says, "Do all things without complaining and disputing." So everything that you are asked to do as a servant in the house of God, you need to be able to do it without complaining because if you complain, you are offending the spirit of God. Because when you are complaining about something that you're asked by someone to do, you are basically complaining to God or you are complaining about God because the authority that has been placed has been placed by God. Now, bitterness also leads to anxiety. What is anxiety? Anxiety is basically worry. Now, the Bible in Philippians chapter 4, verse 6 says, "Be anxious for nothing, but in everything, by prayer and supplication, with thanksgiving, let your requests be made known to God." Now, when you worry, that is basically where you allow non-existent problems to steal your peace. When you are anxious, it means you lack trust in God and you want to be God over your life because you do not trust that God can do a good job because God is a protector. When you are anxious about what you are to do, God is able to carry you through. God is able to see you through. In fact, even in the book of Matthew, chapter 6, from verse 25 to 34, he encourages us not to worry. And so if we are worried, we are offending the spirit of God. We are sinning against God. When we are worried, it leads us to not do things. And when we don't do things, then we are not in our purpose. And when we are not in our purpose, then we become bitter. Now, bitterness hinders a believer from completing the work God has given them to do. We have many leaders that are sitting and not in their positions, and they're miserable. We have people that are supposed to be in the worship team that are not in the worship team. And they're sitting there in their seats and they're miserable. They're complaining about how awful the worship team sounds, how off-key they were. Their tempo was too fast. This and that was wrong. But they are not in their positions. And they say, "I never enjoyed service because of the way the worship team sang." But you are becoming bitter because that's where you are supposed to be, and you are not. And so when you are not in your position, you will definitely become bitter. Now, bitterness also leads to physical illnesses. What does this mean? There are diseases that are caused by the deterioration of the body for which a person can take medication. What are these? There are diseases that we have that are caused by malnutrition, meaning we are not eating right. And so our bodies are not getting the necessary nutrients in order to function. For instance, we need sodium to balance fluids in the body. And we need copper in order to have healthy bones and healthy blood vessels and nerves. And so all these nutrients are necessary in the body. And when we do not take them in or when we take them excessively, then they cause harm to our bodies and we become sick. We can get assistance from doctors where they probably give us medication to make us feel better. But it is on us. It is our duty to actually take care of our bodies. And another sickness, a physical illness that is caused by the deterioration of the body would be something that is probably genetic where you have inherited something from your bloodline. For instance, there are diseases that flow through the bloodline like cancer. So these diseases you basically are getting because you are part of the family that you are part of. Then there are also diseases that come about because of old age. So that is basically wear and tear. It means the systems in your body are starting to fail because their time is up. So we have those diseases that are physical, that are caused by the deterioration of the body. But then there are also diseases that are caused by the state of mind and spirit of the person. These are called psychosomatic illnesses. They are caused by a believer's separation from the Lord, in most cases by harboring sin. Now, bitterness breeds an unhealthy mind. And when your mind is unhealthy, then you affect your immune system. And for most people, now, please note here, I'm not stating that all mental illnesses are because of bitterness. But bitterness is also a cause of other mental illnesses where you find a person being depressed because they are bitter because of something that has taken place in their lives. And you find that those people end up being physically sick. In fact, there are people who will be so ill in their physical bodies and they will not be able to receive help from doctors. Even when they go to church and they're prayed for, they don't get healing. Those people are people that are supposed to deal with the matters of the heart in order for them to get their healing. Those people are people who need to renounce the sin that is living in their hearts in order to get the healing. Many people walk out without healing because they feel justified to hold on to the pain or the sin in their lives. Now, in the book of John, chapter 5, verse 14, we see there prior to this verse, basically the Lord Jesus Christ goes to the pool of Bethesda. And there is a man who is lame. He is sick and he cannot move. He cannot get himself to the pool when the angel comes and he stirs the pool. So he's laying there and he's ill. And the Lord Jesus approaches him and he asks if he wants to be made well. And this man basically tells the Lord Jesus his story. He's trying to explain what he's been going through. He misses the fact that the Lord Jesus Christ is bringing and offering him a solution, but he still wants to dwell on the bitterness that he experiences because of what other people are not doing for him. And so then the Lord Jesus Christ heals him from his sickness. Then the Lord in verse 14 says, the Bible says, "Afterward Jesus found him in the temple and said to him, 'See, you have been made well; sin no more, lest a worse thing come upon you.'" Now, basically what this makes us presume is that this man, prior to his sickness, was well and was functioning well. But there was something that he did that was wayward that caused him to be ill to the point of being lame. Now, when the Lord Jesus Christ heals him, he says, "Make sure that you don't sin again because if you sin, what will come now will be worse than what you have been going through." So we see that sin is able to allow sickness to come into our bodies because bitterness becomes a doorway for the enemy to inflict us with the spirit of affliction, where we find that there are sicknesses. We are riddled with sicknesses. Our body is riddled with sicknesses because we have opened a doorway because of pain that we have allowed to breed bitterness in our lives. So it is important to let go of pain because you are only putting your life at risk. You are not hurting other people but your very own self. Now, bitterness opens the door for the enemy. How does this happen? Now, when bitterness has taken root in a believer's heart, they become unsubmissive and anarchy reigns. Now, it is very hard to submit to a person you do not believe in. When you are bitter towards a person, it is hard for you to believe in them, to do anything positive. It is hard for you to see anything good. And when it is hard for you to submit to a person, then a spirit of rebellion creeps in. Once it creeps in, then you become lawless because any instruction that comes from a person who seemingly offends you will be hard to receive and you do not want to walk by it. And once the spirit of rebellion creeps in, no matter if you leave the church, even if you were to go to another church, you have now opened a doorway for a spirit of rebellion that refuses to have authority over them and you feel that you should be in charge. And this spirit unfortunately is contagious. Once you have it, you always want to share what you have because bitter people do not want to be bitter alone. So they become the devil's agents in spreading their illness to others. When you are bitter, you just can't keep quiet. When you are bitter, you always want somebody, you always want a following, somebody to be bitter with. When you are bitter, you try to find people with whom you share the mindset. And you have this unity now based on a common enemy. Now, unity that is based on a common enemy is temporary. It never lasts. And once it falls apart, it is never nice. It doesn't fall apart smoothly. So you find that all these people gather together because they hate one person, people that would not get along on an ordinary day. You find them getting along because they are bitter towards somebody. But once that person is gone, those people will crash. Now, the devil will continue to pollute the mind of a believer until they are unable to see God in other believers. Now, when you are bitter towards a person, they can never do right. And if they can never do right, then you end up not seeing God in them. You end up not seeing God in their lives. When a person is bitter towards a church, they end up not seeing God working within the church because they walk in with that bitterness. We can have people being slain, people crying, people experiencing the presence of the Lord, and have one dry person who is sitting there and thinking it's all fake because they are unable to hear God. Now, the Lord Jesus says that his sheep recognize his voice. Now, you ought to be careful and you need to be watchful when you are unable to hear the voice of God because no matter where you are, if you are a child of God, you need to be able to hear the voice of God. Now, the Bible in the book of 1 Corinthians 15, verse 33, it says, "Do not be deceived; evil company corrupts good habits." Another says, "Evil company corrupts good character." So what does this mean? This means that if a person is approaching you and they are bitter and you can see the bitterness and you can taste the bitterness that they come with, run. Don't try to change them. The Bible says, "Evil company corrupts good character." It is not your duty to change people. It is not my duty to change you. It is the Holy Spirit who convicts you and transforms you. I can only tell you what the word of God says. I can never make you do it. And so if you see a person that is evil, that is walking in evil, that has chosen to walk in bitterness, that has chosen to entertain the enemy in their lives, you need to step away for your own good. Sometimes salvation is selfish. If you look at the ten virgins, the five virgins that had the oil had to get to a place where they had to be selfish with their oil because if they weren't, then they would have found themselves in a position of missing out on the group. So there are times as a Christian where you need to be more concerned about your salvation than trying to change people. Now, if we were to look at a biblical character who walked in bitterness, I'd say Saul is the best candidate. Now, Saul was chosen to pioneer kingship in Israel. Israel had not had a physical king amongst them. They were led by God and he had introduced judges who were the ones who led them into war, who were the ones that brought salvation unto them. But when Israel wanted to be like other nations and they cried out for a king, then the Lord brought for them Saul, who apparently it was his purpose to be a king because God did not have to go back to the drawing board to actually see and calculate who could be king. But he immediately told Samuel who would be king. So now Saul is chosen and he's walking in his purpose of being a king in Israel and is elevated to a position of authority, meaning he's the highest ranking authority on land in Israel and he is the one who gives out instructions. He was led and guided by God. The Lord was speaking through the prophet to guide him in all that he did. But we find that Saul's end is not like his beginning. He started out humble and he ended up bitter. When he starts out, he is even hiding on the day of his ordination in front of the nation. Nobody finds him and they had to ask God where he is. But when we look at his end, he's no longer that timid person who is hiding. Now, he's a person who is jealous. He's a person who's trying to kill the person that God has chosen. Now, Saul's bitterness came from disobedience. Now, when we look at the book of 1 Samuel from chapter 13, we see there that there is an account where Saul is at Gilgal with his troops. And they're waiting there for Samuel, who told them to wait seven days because they were fighting against the Philistines. Now, Samuel was taking long in arriving and Saul decided that he would do the burnt sacrifice to the Lord. And when Samuel comes, he then rebukes him because he has done wrong. He says, "You have done foolishly, for you have not taken the command of the Lord. Now your kingdom has been taken away from you. It has been stripped away from you." Now, we find that when Saul has done this, he's unrepentant. He rather justifies himself. What he says is, "Well, when I saw that the men were starting to scatter and that you were not coming at the time that you said you would come and that the Philistines were starting to gather now and they were assembling to fight against..." and that the Philistines were starting to gather now, and they were assembling to fight against me, I didn't want to fight against them without seeking the favor of the Lord. So I did what I had to do." So we see there that instead of him being repentant of what he had done, he chooses to justify. In fact, when we also look at First Samuel in the book of, in the book of First Samuel, chapter fifteen, we see there that he was given an instruction to go and destroy all of the Amalekites. What does Saul do? He decides to take the best of the sheep and the cattle and keep it. Now, when Samuel comes to him, he says, "What is this bleating of the sheep that I hear and the lowing of the cattle?" And he says, "Well, the soldiers decided that they were gonna take the best of the sheep and the cattle, and they were gonna bring it and sacrifice it to the Lord, but you know what? We killed and destroyed the rest." Now you see there that instead of acknowledging his faults, he'd rather justify himself or blame other people. He never took responsibility as the authority that has been placed, but he wanted to blame other people. Now, this led him to being stripped of the kingdom. And God tells him twice. He tells him in the book of First Samuel, chapter thirteen, that he has stripped the kingdom from him. And he also tells him the very same, meaning that it was established in the, in, in chapter fifteen. So we see that Saul's disobedience led him to forfeiting the kingdom. And now God raises a man for himself who is after his own heart, and he raises David. Now, we see David growing up in front of Saul, and we see him growing into a man of war before Saul. And now one day, they went out to fight against the Philistines. And when they come back, the women start singing and saying that Saul has killed his thousands, but David has killed his tens of thousands. And Saul hears this, and he's indignant, and he says, "How is it that they have credited me with thousands and David, they have credited him with tens of thousands?" And from that day, he became jealous of David, and then he wanted to kill him. He started hunting David. Now he became this bitter person. In fact, he was so bitter that a spirit would come upon him, and he would need a musician, a psalmist, to play music for him. That is, the bitterness that was in his heart. And so this bitterness drove him to wanting to destroy David. And he also had a superiority complex. So there, a superiority complex is basically an attitude of superiority that is hiding a feeling of inferiority and failure. We see that he was acting superior over other people because he was hiding all the failures that he had done in his, in his life and in his time as a king. So he wants to destroy everything that reminds him of his failures. Now, when bitterness comes in our lives, there is a cost. When we allow bitterness to grow in our lives, there is a cost. Bitterness kills purpose. Bitterness takes away our health, and bitterness kills us. How does it take away our purpose? If we look at a person in scripture who allowed bitterness to draw him away from purpose, it is Haman in the book of Esther. Now Haman was the highest, he was given the highest seat by Artaxerxes. He was given the highest seat amongst the nobles of the land. And so he should have appreciated that position and fulfilled all that was called by that position. But we find him being troubled by just one man. He's troubled by the fact that Mordecai would not bow to him. And instead of letting it pass, instead of letting Mordecai be, he decides now to take his energy and focus it on Mordecai. Now, the thing is, you, you should never ever try to fight your battles. The Bible tells us never to fight our battles. It says, "The Lord avenges us." Whenever we try to fight our battles, there is always going to be something detrimental, detrimental on our part. And so we see Haman now trying to destroy Mordecai. But what happens when he puts all this energy into entertaining the bitterness that is in his heart? We find that the very tool that Haman had put up, had built up, had designed, had created to be the demise of Mordecai was the very tool that became his demise. He lost his position. He lost his title, and he died because of his bitterness. He did not recognize the purpose, the purpose of his position, but he wanted to do and, and, and feed his bitterness. Now, another thing that bitterness does is that it takes away our health. If we look at Miriam and, and Aaron, now these two are sitting here discussing Moses, and they have a problem with his Kushite wife. And there they're sitting and they're thinking, and they say, "Has God only spoken through Moses? Because he's also spoken through us." And God hears them, and God is offended on Moses' behalf, who does not know what is happening. So God calls all of them, and he addresses the issue. And immediately afterwards, Miriam is struck with leprosy. Now, one thing you ought to be careful with is that you need to be careful who you talk to because you might be speaking to somebody who's under the protection of their garment or under the protection of their position, under the protection of a mantle, and you speak carelessly because of what you feel against your leader. And so we see there that, in fact, I mean, inasmuch as they may have been sharing the same opinion, it is impossible that they both started talking about it at the same time. Somebody came up with the issue. Somebody wanted to tackle the elephant in the room. Somebody brought it up. And then it became an issue that they were able to freely speak about. Now, the consequences on Miriam are leprosy that covers her whole body. It must have been very bad because when Aaron saw him, when Aaron saw her, he repented immediately, and he asked that she be granted mercy. And Moses immediately interceded on her behalf. And we find that she had to be in that state of leprosy for a, a long period, well, seven days. And in that time, the nation could not move because of her sin that has now caused an inconvenience to the rest of the camp. Now, we also said that bitterness costs our life. Now, a case that we can look at is Korah, Dathan, and Abiram, and the two hundred and fifty community leaders. We see them now approaching Moses, confronting Moses, and they say to him, "The congregation is holy, all of them. God is with them. Why have you exalted yourself above the assembly?" And we see Moses being offended, and God is offended on his behalf. And we see men dying. Even in that case, they did not just decide to wake up one morning and just go and approach Moses, but it had been an issue that was brewing. It had been an issue that they had all sat and discussed. And now they went and approached the person that God has placed in leadership. And we find that they die because of the bitterness that they have allowed to grow in their hearts. And not only them, but this spirit now, that of this bitterness that has bred rebellion is now spread to many in the camp. And we find that it's not just the two hundred and fifty that die and the families of the three men, but also fourteen thousand seven hundred people die because now they are murmuring, because now they are caught up in the spirit of rebellion. Remember, we said earlier that the spirit of rebellion is very contagious. So what are you willing to lose because of the rebellion that you are holding on to? What are you willing to, to, to forfeit in your life? What is it that you don't care about so much in your life that you're willing to lose? Because it could be your very life that you actually lose. Now, we're gonna be looking at overcoming bitterness because the Bible tells us that we are more than conquerors. We see that in Romans, in the book of Romans, chapter eight, verse thirty-seven. So as believers, we are called to conquer and overcome bitterness and overcome any weakness in our lives and overcome any challenge. Now, how do we overcome? Firstly, we begin with confessing and repenting our sin. It is very important to firstly acknowledge, recognize that you are bitter. We said earlier that there are people who never recognize that they are bitter or who think that they're not bitter and who think that their actions are not normal. But when you recognize or when you see the symptoms of bitterness, it is important that you acknowledge that, that you are bitter, and then you confess. Confessing is basically the expression, and repenting is then the action that you do after confessing because you recognize and realize that this is offensive to God and you walk away from it. Now, we have to continuously feed ourselves with the word of God and be doers of it as well. Now, once we have renounced the spirit of bitterness in us, it is important that we then feed ourselves with the word of God because when you remove one thing, you have to replace it with something else. The Bible in the book of Matthew, chapter twelve, from verse forty-three to forty-five, it tells us that when a spirit leaves a man, it goes around in every place seeking a place where it will dwell. But then when it sees it finds no place, it decides that I will go back to my dwelling place. When it gets there, it finds the place swept and clean, and then it goes and gets seven more spirits that are more wicked than it is. And then the state of the man is worse than before. So it is important that once we renounce and denounce bitterness in our lives, then we fill that space, we fill that gap with the word of God so that we are not consumed by the spirit of bitterness because once we allow it to come back in us, it will be, we will be in a worse state than before. We see the cases of Haman. We see the cases of Korah, and we see the cases of Miriam, and we think they're bad. But once we allow bitterness to return in our lives, we also will be in a worse of state that costs our health, that costs our purpose, and that costs our lives. Now, we have to allow the word of God to search us and wash us. We need to allow the word of God to expose the hidden things in our lives, the things that we feel we are justified to keep. We need to allow the word of God to expose them and be the solution that cleanses us from these very things. In the book of Hebrews, chapter four, verse twelve, the Bible says, "For the word of God is living and powerful, sharper than any two-edged sword, piercing even to the division of soul and spirit and of joints and marrow, and is a discerner of the thoughts and intents of the heart." Now, when the word of God comes into us, our intentions are made clear, then we are able to see why we do what we do because remember, the word of God attracts trials. When the word of God comes in us, then it is tested. When it is tested, then our intentions are made clear. And so it is important that we allow the word of God to walk into us and to change us and transform us and humble us and mold us into that which Christ desires. Now, we are called to walk in love for one another. In the book of First Peter, four, verse eight, the Bible says, "And above all, have fervent love for one another, for love will cover over a multitude of sins." Now, you cannot love someone while seeking their demise. You cannot claim to love someone while you're hoping that they fail. Now, you also don't love somebody when you say, "I love them, but..." But you should have unconditional love for them. The Bible, in the book of First Corinthians, chapter thirteen, it tells us exactly what love is and what love does. So in order for us to confidently claim to love our neighbor, in order for us to confidently claim to love our sisters and our brothers, we need to go and test ourselves in the book of First Corinthians, chapter thirteen. In fact, the Lord Jesus Christ, he instructs us, and he says, "You know what? I'm not telling you to love your neighbor as you love yourself, but I'm telling you to love your neighbor as I have loved you." So we are called to love as Christ loved us, and he loved us with an unconditional love. So we need to be able to look past all the bitterness, everything, everything that the person has done that may cause you to feel more righteous than them, more deserving than them, than them, but walk in love because love covers over a multitude of sins. Now, love begins with God because God is love. We find this in the book of First John, chapter four, verse eight, and also in the, in, in verse sixteen because the Bible says that if we do not love, then we do not know God because God is love. So when we love, we are in God. When we do things with love, we do them with God. When we love another person, it means between me and that person is God. So we need to be able to have that unity because unity will not come unless we love one another. Now, we can only achieve unity when we love one another genuinely. Now, unity is not a prayer point. It is not a point that we add to the, the intercession prayer point, but unity is an action because when we pray for unity, we are mocking God because we say we pray for unity, yet we are able to walk out and gossip about each other. We're able to walk out and hate each other. So unity will take us, changing our mindset, losing our bitterness, losing our selfishness and being selfless and taking on, on the character of Christ. And so it is important that we are able to overcome our bitterness with love. Now, scripture warns us about the natural state of our heart, which means it cannot be trusted. This means that if we know the state of our heart, then we will not blindly trust it. The Bible in the book of Jeremiah seventeen nine, it tells us that the heart is desperately wicked. Who can know it? It says it's beyond cure. And so if we know that the heart is evil, then we need to pay careful attention, pay special attention to the state of our heart. We need to realize that the state of our heart affects the quality of our life. And the Bible encourages us to take care of our hearts because that is where the issues of life spring from. And so it is important that we, we realize that the state of our lives will affect what we produce because if we look at the, in, in, in the book of Matthew, chapter thirteen, we see there that the, the heart is likened unto soil. Now, soil is where you plant. Now, if the soil is bad, it means that what you produce out of the soil will be bad as well. So we need to constantly fight that our heart be in a state that is acceptable to God. We have to fight each and every day for the meditations of our hearts to be pure. Now, in the book of Philippians, chapter four, verse eight, the Bible says, "Finally, brethren, whatever things are true, whatever things are noble, whatever things are just, whatever things are pure, whatever things are lovely, whatever things are of good report, if there is anything praiseworthy, meditate on these things." Now, the Bible encourages us to meditate on that which is good, on that which is pleasing to God because in that way we are able to overcome bitterness because bitterness is, is bred or is fed into by the negative thoughts that we allow the enemy to plant in us. It is fed by our anxiety. It is fed by our fear. It is fed by our pain. It is fed by our anger. And so it is important that we not hold on to these things in order for us to not be pressed down and bogged down by bitterness. Now, before us is a picture. What I want us to look at in this picture is what it's basically depicting. Now, if you look on the right-hand side, that is a tree that is growing with unhealthy soil, that is growing in unhealthy soil. And if you look on the left-hand side, that is a tree that is growing in a, a healthy soil. Now, basically, we are basing this on Matthew, chapter thirteen, where we see the analogy of the sower and the seed. And we see there that, um, the Bible tells us that the seed there is thrown on different types of surfaces which speak of different types of hearts. There are those that have a hard heart that is rocky. There is one that is thrown in the pathway. There is one that is thrown in amongst the thorns. And then there's one that is thrown within the healthy soil or in the fertile ground, and that is where the seed grows. Now, the danger here is that there are people who appear to be fertile soil, and they receive the seed, but because their hearts are unhealthy, because their hearts are holding on to negative things, because their hearts are holding on to bitterness, then they're able to, while having received the seed, grow something and make it seem like it is the best that they can produce only to find that if there is no right, left-hand side to compare to, we look at the unhealthy soil's production, and we think it is beautiful. We think it is the best. We love it. But once we compare to the actual potential of the soil, then we are able to see that there is more to be desired. We are able to see that what is produced by this soil, it falls short from the ideal. It falls short from the complete picture. Now, we have a lot of people who have, because of holding on to certain things in their hearts and thinking it is fine and thinking it is justified, we find them producing, but they're not producing at their optimum level. We find them producing something that seems like it is the best. But if they were to see what it is that they could produce, even they would be in a state of despair. even they would be in a state of despair. Because when our hearts are not right, what will come out of it will not be right as well. As James three twelve says, "Can a salt spring produce fresh water?" So we see that it would be impossible for unhealthy soil to produce a healthy tree. Now, if the tree is unhealthy, it means the fruit will be unhealthy as well. Now, the Bible in Galatians, chapter five, encourages us to walk in the Spirit and produce the fruit of the Spirit. In order for us to walk in the Spirit, it means we have to let go of all these negative feelings. We find that in the house of the Lord, we are unable to walk in the Spirit as children of God. We are unable to be united in the Spirit. We are unable to produce the fruit of the Spirit because we have allowed our hearts to be unhealthy soil in which the root of bitterness grows. Now, in order for us to come right, in order for us to be able to fully overcome bitterness in our lives, we need to be able to correct the problem by acknowledging firstly that it exists. We need to be in a place of humility to recognize that we are bitter. And we need to then take steps that, as we have mentioned earlier, that we need to confess it, we need to repent, we need to see the gravity of this sin in our lives. And regardless of whatever it may cost us, we need to be able to expose the evil because the devil thrives in secrecy. So it is important for us, when we are starting to feel bitter, to expose it so that the root does not grow in our hearts. Because what will be produced from the tree that will grow from bitterness will not be that which is conducive for our Christian life. Now, the Bible in the book of Ephesians, chapter five, from verse eight, it says, "For you were once darkness, but now you are light in the Lord. Walk as children of light; for the fruit of the Spirit is in all goodness, righteousness, and truth, finding out what is acceptable to the Lord, and have no fellowship with the unfruitful works of darkness, but rather expose them." Now, the challenge is on us. Now, the task is left on us. What are we willing to do with the Word of God that he speaks to us? What are we willing to do with the things that he has shown us that they are not pleasing to him? Are we going to harbor them and feel justified and feel that we are in a good place when we are holding on to these bad things? Or are we going to let go of them and seek him? There are many people who, in their position or in their state of bitterness, have even tried to fight for God. People felt that some people shouldn't be in leadership, and so therefore they tried to fight for God and have found themselves being in trouble with God. They have found themselves losing themselves in trying to fight for God. You never fight for God. God is all capable by himself to fight for himself. So it is imperative that you do not allow for the bitterness that you harbor in your heart to make you to do things that will kill you in the end. I'd like for us to pray today. What are we praying for? We are praying that, "Lord, help us to recognize areas in our lives where we have allowed bitterness to grow, where we have allowed ourselves to be justified in the way that we feel." Because some of us are not producing at our optimum level. We are producing at a substandard because we have held things, and the heart is now unhealthy soil in which the seed is supposed to grow, but it is not reaching a hundredfold. It is not even reaching sixtyfold. But we want to now change the state of our heart. We want to be soil that is free from people that we have held in our hearts as people that are deserving of evil or as people that are deserving of damnation. We want to let go of all of that. We want to learn to forgive. We want to learn to appreciate trials. We want to move away from self-righteousness. We want to move away from fear. We want to let go of our past experiences. And we want our heart to be a new slate. We want the heart of stone to be removed. And we want a heart of flesh that will be able to receive you and receive your word. I'd like for us to pray for a heart that is pure, a heart that loves genuinely, that we are able to produce unconditional love in our hearts. Remember, nobody is perfect. Even leaders, you find people that are bitter in their positions of leadership. Saul was a king, but he still found himself bitter. Haman was the highest noble, but he found himself bitter. Aaron and Miriam, they were in a position of leadership, but they found themselves bitter. So bitterness does not choose what position you hold. You can be a leader, you can be a layman. And so you need to realize that you are not exempt wherever you are. And we all need to search ourselves. The Bible says that the Word of God searches the intent of the heart. Let us allow the Word of God to search us and expose any bitterness, any root of bitterness that might be growing in us and that it may be pulled up by the roots. Let us pray. Father, in the mighty name of Jesus Christ of Nazareth, we present ourselves before you right now, realizing and recognizing, mighty God, that on our own, we are not perfect. On our own, we cannot do all that you desire. On our own, we cannot reach the standard that you require of us. We pray therefore, right now, Holy Spirit of the living God, that you come in us and with your word teach us and with your word wash us and with your word expose everything that is not like you. Search us, oh God, and test us, oh God. Examine us each and every morning that we wake, mighty King, to make sure that no root of bitterness finds a chance to grow and defile us and defile many. We pray, King of glory, that there be no bitterness in your house. Because we realize, mighty God, that there is no place where we can find a perfect man on this earth. While we are on this earth, we are still going to be hurt. While we are on this earth, we are still going to be angered. We are still going to be betrayed. But I pray, King of glory, that you help us to be in a place where we are able to forgive. When you came on earth, your own did not receive you, God, but you held it not against them. Even those that crucified you, you did not hold it against them, but you forgave. You gave us a pattern by which we should live. And so I pray that we are able to follow that pattern in order for us to one day see you again. We pray, holy Father, that you help us not to harbor sin in us, but to expose the works of the devil in us. We pray that you purify our hearts, that we be in a state that is pleasing to you and recognize, mighty King, that there is nothing that will be perfect in this world. Mighty King, not even a church. We will not find a church that is perfect, mighty King. And so where you have placed us, we need to function fully in our purpose in that place where you have planted us, that we may be able to bloom, mighty King, and not try to find any other place because of our bitterness or because of our self-righteousness, where we want to plant ourselves, but to be where you have placed us. We pray, mighty God, that you guide us and help us at all times. We know, mighty God, that you hear us, and we thank you that you hear us as we pray, mighty God, and we believe that, mighty King, you will answer our prayers because you said, "If we ask anything in your name, it shall be done for us." We pray all of this therefore, in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ of Nazareth. Amen.